Good afternoon and welcome to the August 11th Planning Board Meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order and have a moment of silence, please.
We could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Sorry, I know you just sat down.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Diane, do we have any items of information?
We do, but I had printed it out and I don't have it, so I need to... Actually, would you go first?
Sure.
Yep.
Yep, so I'll take the second bullet. I'm very pleased to introduce Long Range Planner to Chris Watson. This is the start of his second week with the town. He will be focusing on community engagement, assisting with our transit services and program development as well as other functions in long-range planning. He's an Apex native, so this is coming home for Chris, although most recently he's been in San Diego, where he completed his Masters in City Planning at San Diego University. He has also been serving as a Regional Planning Intern with the San Diego Association of Governments. He's gained experience there in transportation planning, community outreach, planning studies, and research. He did his Bachelor's at App State and also brings experience in organization, conflict resolution, and management as he is a former captain in the U.S. Marine Corps. So please help me welcome Chris.
Welcome, Chris. All right, and I would like to introduce new Planning Board member Mary Peterson. Mary has joined the Planning Board as representative of the Apex Historical Society. Mary and her husband Mike have lived in Apex since 2000 and raised their children here. She has a Bachelor's Degree in History from St. Bonaventure University and a Master of Public Affairs Degree from UNC Greensboro. She works at a university where she's a department chair and teaches classes in public administration and political science. She's been a member of the Apex Historical Society for seventeen years and a board member for nine of those years, including Secretary, Vice President, and President. And her role on the Planning Board is to be a guiding voice for town officials regarding the town's historical structures and geographic area while supporting the Apex Historical Society mission of preserving, protecting, and promoting the history of Apex. So welcome, Mary.
Welcome, Mary.
Yes, Amanda is gonna give us an update, the most recent update the town has, on where things stand with the road closure on Olive Chapel.
So this is a press release that was issued by NC DOT on August 7th. The North Carolina Department of Transportation is exploring ways to accelerate the plans to replace the culvert that failed under Olive Chapel Road during flooding this week. Before Wednesday's heavy showers swelled Beaver Creek, causing one of two metal drain pipes under the road to collapse. The department already was making plans to replace and upgrade this drainage system. Because the failure washed away part of the pavement and shoulder, the department has closed Olive Chapel Road in both directions, less than a half mile east of NC 540. The department has also closed the sidewalk until engineers can fully evaluate whether it's safe to reopen the sidewalk. Drivers should factor in the longer commute using the signed detour, which consists of Patterson Grove Road, NC 55, Apex Peakway, Kelly Road, and US 64. People should avoid this barricaded site for their safety. The department is working to finalize plans to design the project, acquire additional right-of-way, and relocate utilities in the roadway in order to replace the pipes, which were nearing the end of their lifespan. The department has received feedback from the Town of Apex on the project. An NC DOT contractor will need to be hired to construct onsite an aluminum box-shaped culvert that will meet the department's modern standards and convey larger amounts of water safely underneath the road. The overall project is estimated to cost more than $2 million. Department engineers will announce a project timeline as soon as more details are finalized.
Thank you, Amanda. The only thing I will add is that WRL is reporting that NC DOT expects to provide an update by September on the timeline to reopening the road. So I just wanted to add that update. And then before we move into public comment, I wanted to share, take a point of privilege and share that this is gonna be my last Planning Board meeting. After six and a half years, I am resigning effective after adjournments this evening. I'm returning to school. I'm looking at becoming a midwife. I currently, in my day job, do public health policy and am looking forward to getting back into not just the policy, but also the clinical aspect as well. It's been an absolute pleasure to serve the town in this capacity. I've seen this board grow and go from being a yes ma'am, yes sir board to having thoughtful and intentional conversations and engaging our neighbors and the community. And I am so grateful to have served with you all and grateful to have been a part of moving the board in that direction. I don't run the meetings in conventional ways, which has admittedly, I know, bugged some folks. But y'all, we are not paid to be here. I show up after a full day of work. I have four boys, a husband, and a full-time, very busy job. Sometimes you just get me authentically and raw. And so I just show up here because I care about our town. So you'll still see me around. I'm not gonna disappear. I'll still be engaged, but I'm stepping back from this role. So just want to say thank you all for your support in serving alongside me. With that, we will... With that, we will move to public comments. The public comment is an opportunity for the public to speak on items that do not appear on the agenda under the Public Hearing section. Any member of the public wishing to comment should sign up here to my left, here right. And you will have three minutes to speak unless you're representing a group. Have any signed up for public comment this evening? Thank you. All right, with that, we will move on. Oh, did you want to sign up, sir?
Yeah.
Yes, please. If you want, you can go ahead and speak and then, if that doesn't throw you off...
Oh, do you want me to sign?
Oh, no, that would be one of the... This is just public comment for anything that's not on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Yep, if it's not on the agenda, yeah, you can sign up. If no one else is here to speak on public comments, then we will move on to Consent Agenda. Item number one, the minutes for the July 14th meeting. I assume folks have had an opportunity to take a look at this minutes. Any questions or a motion?
Motion to approve.
You state your name for the record.
Jeff.
All right, Sarah seconds.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? All right, with that, it's approved. All right, we will move on to Public Hearings. Item number one, which Shannon, possible motion, Public Hearing, a possible motion regarding an amendment to the Transit Plan Map.
Okay, thank you. So we actually have proposed amendments to the Transit Plan Map as well as the Bicycle and Pedestrian System Plan Map of our town's transportation plan. These are associated with the Apex Mobility Hub Plan. So the Planning Board in April recommended that Town Council accept the Mobility Hub Plan, which was led by NC DOT. Town Council did accept that plan in May. And now we're considering reflecting associated amendments on our adopted plans. And this is the opportunity for public hearings about those. So the first slide is an overview, and then I've got a couple of exhibits that zoom in a little bit. But just to orient everybody, we're looking at the downtown area. So this is Salem Street. Here's 55, and this is the S-line Railroad Corridor. The Apex Mobility Hub Plan identified that a future mobility hub serving bus, bikes, pedestrians, and possibly future passenger rail is recommended in this vicinity, near East Moore Street, adjacent to the railroad tracks. The remaining proposed amendments are about getting people to this mobility hub by bike and on foot. So just to zoom in a bit, this is an exhibit of our Transit Plan Map. We currently have what we are calling a mobility hub, a rail and bus transit center, identified with this circle here, which is approximately on the CSX property adjacent to Center Street. The Mobility Hub Plan identified that there's some issues with that location in serving future passenger rail. And ultimately, after looking at five different locations, recommended the East Moore Street location. So the Transit Plan Map Amendment is to shift that future rail and bus transit center to the location identified in the Mobility Hub Plan. These are recommended, are proposed amendments to the Bicycle and Pedestrian System Plan Map. So the blue circle here represents that mobility hub area. We're recommending proposed side path added to East Moore Street between Salem and the future mobility hub to allow people to have an enhanced access by bike or foot to the mobility hub. A proposed grade-separated crossing of the railroad. Based on the Mobility Hub Plan, the actual building and hub facilities' bus drop-off would be on the west side of the railroad tracks. And any future rail platform would be on the east side. So that grade-separated crossing would allow people to go between the east and the west without crossing at the tracks. There's also a proposed grade-separated crossing of East Williams Street or NC 55. That would be an alternative to the signalized crossing. People could use either one. The signalized crossing at Salem and 55 that would provide for bicycles and pedestrians to reach the mobility hub with no conflicts with vehicles. And we all know that's a very busy intersection. And sorry, my mouse keeps disappearing, so... So that grade-separated crossing is proposed to be connected to an additional side path, and that's the last proposed amendment that would connect all the way from the tingeon grade-separated crossing that you're gonna hear more about at the end of your agenda, all the way to the downtown strollway, which is what connects Town Campus to the downtown sidewalk system, roughly paralleling Elm Street where it exists today. And I'll go back to the overview so that you can see how that all functions together. So the side path connects, would connect from the strollway all the way down to that tingeon grade-separated crossing and into the proposed network of side path and greenway in that location. This was reviewed by staff in Transportation, Infrastructure and Development, Parks and Rec, Planning, Police and Fire. All were supportive and did not have concerns about these amendments. Planning staff do recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for open public hearing?
For the grade separations, those are gonna take up quite a bit of space on either side. Do we have dedicated space already, or is this something where you're looking at having to acquire additional property?
So many of these recommendations would require some type of property acquisition or easements. The Apex Mobility Hub Plan gave us a concept for these crossings, but not a functional design. So we would need much more design work to be able to determine exactly what property needs there are. You see on this slide, the concept showed that we would need some staircases to get to and from the bridge or ramps, which there are some images showing how we think that could work. That is if we want a direct access from that bridge down to 55 on both sides. So that could be done a little bit differently, but for the plan now, we're recommending that we plan on having that access down to 55 on both sides, knowing that much more design work would need to be done in the future.
I'm guessing that's the same as like the side path along Elm Street because it's adjacent to the railroad? Like there'll probably be some talks between the railroad and the town to do that.
Yes, this is all very conceptual, so to move forward, any of these recommendations, there will have to be talks with the railroad, DOT, adjacent property owners in some case. But by adding it to our plan, we can begin to work on different ways to fund these projects. And as development occurs, and you all know this really well, it shows what's on our adopted plan so that we can work with any development to make sure that we're getting right-of-way or facilities in place.
Are there any projects currently in review that this would impact on any of these parcels?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't think that there's any projects currently in review now right along these projects. I will say the public project for NC 55, you know, but... And it does help when we're working with NC DOT for them to know what the town's vision is for different crossings and connections.
It... Go ahead.
Well, I mean, I say there's not projects, but I know there is some development going along. I think it's Elm Street next to the tracks. There's single-family construction there. It looks like that's in the current zone.
These homes here?
Yeah, well, yeah, the side street there, is that Moore Street? Drop it down, like right in there. There's new construction going on as we speak.
No, Amanda, if you have any insight into...
I think there's existing lots of record there, but those homes have been... There may be one additional lot along the north-south. Is that still Elm extending? Or that may have, but other than that, all those lots are developed.
And just for your awareness, I mean, with the Apex Mobility Hub Plan, we did send letters to all adjacent property owners during the planning process and had a meeting for property owners as well as multiple public meetings to kind of go through the proposal.
Did we figure out if that project was in the path? I hear that it's currently going on, but I...
I guess it's still conceptual, so it's, we don't know if it's in the path or not.
So the side path in that location is proposed for the west side of Elm Street, so that would be adjacent to the railroad track side.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking those, if it's under construction, that's already been approved. Those are not individuals who would have been a part of this conversation? Wondering how do we do a good job in disseminating this information sort of in this strange in-between period in which, you know, development has been approved, development is underway, and owners have not taken... Owners may or may not have signed, signed on for those lots yet.
So this, this side path in this location would not be on private property. But when projects do move forward into design and project development, we have additional opportunities for public review, public notification, public meetings where we show, you know, the functional design, and they can get a little bit of a better understanding of how the facility would relate to their property and provide additional input at that time.
And just as an update, I looked at our more recent aerial map, and where you see the vacant lot there below the skinny lots, there's a house there now, and it's still owned by the builder according to Wake County tax records. So the property ownership would not have changed since our communication went out.
Diane, out of curiosity, what would be the timeline for this? What's like the anticipated completion date for this?
So the Mobility Hub Plan proposes this in phases. The first phase would really be the Mobility Hub site itself, which we can go back to that document, but it includes repaving, restroom facility, bus stop pullouts, parking, bus stop improvements on Salem Street. So that's really Phase One, and even that does not have committed funding at this point. I do think that there's an upcoming opportunity for funding through the Wake Transit Plan, which the draft Wake Transit Plan sets aside funding for mobility hubs like this. And we are actively participating in, you know, making sure that Apex is considered as one of those locations. And we are actively participating in, you know, making sure that Apex is considered as one of those locations. But even the first phase is not funded at this time.
Shannon. I just want to note that I think that the, the proposed changes are comprehensive, and, and this is not at all diminishing any of the other comments that have been made. I think they are certainly reasonable and viable. But I do think that the proposed amendments are, are broader than just moving the hub and calling it a day, which is great. I'm curious, can you share a little detail about what happened with the current location? I know that there's, and somebody correct me, there's a CSX, is it a maintenance building or something that's within the right of way right there? And so, is it a function of CSX said, you know what, guys, we're not moving that anytime soon? And so, just, just curious, in terms of that location and its proximity to the core of downtown and the original policy, what, what kind of went wrong? What, what went off the rails, pardon me?
So, so this is the most detailed study we've had to date about how these different sites would function for possible passenger rail. So, one of the most important factors in my mind that came out of comparing these locations is how, when a train is coming, or when a train is stopped, how would that impact our downtown grid? And that location, we would have to close multiple road crossings the entire time the train is there, as it approaches. And probably not the best for the downtown area. CSX has not said yes or no to any of the locations to date, so that would be a future phase as to really coordinate with CSX on, you know, making this happen. We're not there in the process yet. But we do know it would be very difficult for them, and there's, there's many steps involved with, that's their employee switching area there, how to accommodate that in a different location. Also, just, and this is outside of my expertise, but we did have rail engineers working on the mobility hub plan. And just the, the function of the, the railroad itself there and the switches would be difficult to add the passenger station.
Okay. Okay, yeah, it's right there at the end of that curve, okay. Understood, that's great, thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any additional questions for Shannon?
And I've gone back to the overview slide, just so you can see all of the proposed amendments on one, thank you.
And can you see if we have anyone signed up for public hearing for this? I will open public hearing. And I will close public hearing, thank you. Since closed public hearing, I'll bring it back to the board for additional conversation, questions and possible motion.
I think this is consistent with what we discussed earlier in the year and adds up, and it's just a piece of the broader puzzle that the town is putting together for this mobility hub. So, I will make a motion to approve the amendments to the transit plan map and bicycle and pedestrian system plan map and the Apex Transportation Plan.
And you are?
And I'm Alyssa.
Thank you. Alyssa makes a motion?
Second, by press.
Second contestant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that passes unanimously, thank you, thank you, Shannon. All right, we'll move on to item number two, public hearing and possible motion regarding rezoning case 25CZ07 Old Raleigh Road with applicant Dan Morse.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. And this is resounding case 25CZ07 for 1211 Old Raleigh Road. This property is located in this general area on Old Raleigh Road within the ETJ. The subject property is approximately 6.4 acres and is located on the north side of Old Raleigh Road, south of Shepherd's Vineyard. The property includes a residential structure, mature trees, a pond, and an intermediate stream that bisects the property from the western property line to the eastern property line. The stream and pond have a 50-foot riparian buffer. The property is currently zoned residential-agricultural, and the adjacent zoning districts are to the north and east, medium density, to the southeast portion, medium density conditional zoning, to the southwest, medium density, and to the west, residential-agricultural. The applicant is proposing to rezone to medium density conditional zoning. The 2045 land use map classifies the subject property as medium density residential. The proposed rezoning to medium density residential conditional zoning is consistent with that land use classification. A letter of impact from Wake County Public School Systems was received for this rezoning and is included in the staff report packet. Wake County Public School System indicates that schools at elementary, middle and high school grade levels within the current assignment area for the proposed rezoning and development are anticipated to have sufficient capacity for future students. The applicant conducted neighborhood meetings on May 14th and July 21st, 2025. The neighborhood meeting reports are attached in your packet. A full list of the proposed uses and zoning conditions can be found on page two of the staff report. The applicant is proposing the use of single-family and accessory apartment. Besides the architectural zoning conditions related to residential development that we typically see, there are a few zoning conditions I would like to point out. So, the first one is a maximum density of three units per acre will be permitted. A minimum of 30% of the gross parcel area will be reserved as resource conservation area. The Home, Homeowner Association Covenant shall not restrict the construction of accessory dwelling units. Transportation-related conditions include the developer shall dedicate public right-of-way 55 feet from right-of-way centerline for the entirety of the parcel, frontage along Old Raleigh Road based on the total ultimate section of 110 feet in the Apex Transportation Plan. The second transportation condition, the developer shall complete frontage widening based on the four-lane median divided typical section with bike lanes and a 10-foot side path in the Apex Transportation Plan only for the frontage of the projects proposed for residential lots around this location. The remainder of the frontage not being developed for residential lots can remain as interim section with sidewalk until such time a project funded by others proposes to widen Old Raleigh Road along this location. In the event the developer proposes a public street to access the lots, the developer will be required to include a stub street to the parcel at the west, so somewhere along this property line. This rezoning was exempt from meeting with the Apex Environmental Advisory Board per UDO Section 2.1.9. However, the applicant has proposed environmental conditions that we typically see suggested by the EAV. In addition to the environmental conditions, the applicant is also proposing two conditions related to the existing ponds and riparian buffer. The first one is to preserve and protect existing wildlife species. Existing ponds shall be preserved if structurally sound. The pond will be evaluated by a geotechnical engineer prior to subdivision plan approval. And the second condition, no development other than utilities shall be allowed north or east of the riparian buffer, so along this area into the east. So, this is pretty much the only area that they would be able to develop. For additional context, the pond and dams condition will be evaluated during subdivision plan approval. If the pond is drained, the location of the riparian buffer will change the pond bank to wherever the new stream bank forms. If the, if the dam is removed, the development will be required to wait six months to determine where the stream reforms. And then the stream buffer will be 50 feet from the new stream bank instead of from the pond bank. So, that's just some additional information that we would look for during potentially subdivision plan approval if this was approved. Housing staff did not recommend an affordable housing condition to be included due to the limited size of the rezoning. The 2045 land use map classifies the subject property as medium density residential. The proposed rezoning is consistent with that land use classification. The proposed rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest as the proposed zoning district and conditions allow the property to be developed in a manner that is consistent with the residential character of the area and limits allowable density consistent with the subdivision to the north. The proposed rezoning includes environmental conditions that exceed the standard unified development ordinance requirements and dedicates right-of-way along the parcel's frontage consistent with the Apex Transportation Plan. Additionally, the proposed rezoning will require the development to complete frontage widening improvements along the proposed residential lots consistent with the Apex Transportation Plan. Planning staff recommends approval of rezoning case 25CZ07 with conditions offered by the applicant. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, as well as the applicant who's in the audience.
Questions for Lauren?
Great job on your presentation.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I have a question, Lauren.
Yes, ma'am.
The, in the neighborhood meetings, one of the neighbors expressed concern around speed limit change. And the applicant responded with, would discuss with the town and request alluring of the posted speed limit. I'm wondering if there's any follow-up. I'm asking you mainly because they said they talked to the town, so I wanted to see if they had talked to you yet. And obviously, we can wait until they come up if, if that conversation hasn't happened.
Sure, I, I obviously would like the applicant to provide information, and I will confirm with Russell if, if they've talked with Russell about the transportation related, because I know, I'll, I'll confirm with it as well, though.
That, has that conversation happened?
We have not had that conversation.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Any additional questions? All right, I'm going to open, open public hearing and allow the applicant to come up.
Hey, good afternoon, oh, sorry.
Just one moment, just one moment, thank you. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Is that we normally ask for public hearings, did I open public hearing, open public hearing? Ask the applicant unless they have a group with them to have three minutes to speak and to focus on items that Lauren did not, did not cover already. And then obviously, we'll come back to the board, and if you have, we have additional questions for you, we'll, we'll call you back up.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
You're welcome.
I'm Zach Shipman, Shipman Engineering, represent the applicant ODG 87. Appreciate y'all's consideration of this project today. Just before I forget the speed limit conversation, we have not had that conversation yet. My understanding is that that process can be quite complicated. We can absolutely have that conversation before town council meeting with, with Russ Dalton to discuss that speed limit change. But as far as this project goes, we're, we're really, we had a lot of feedback from the neighbors about preserving existing tree canopy and vegetation, as well as capping the density. And so, we've, we've proposed a number of conditions that do just that. We're proposing more resource conservation area than is required by code. We're really capping that density. I think the density is allowed at six, we've conditioned it out at three. In practicality, we can only fit three lots on this property, so that if for some reason that this, you know, if this rezoning goes through, and for whatever reason, it's not us that develops this, that density would be capped pretty low. But three lots is really all that this will fit. There's a fair number of wetlands and riparian buffers and surface waters and streams and those kind of things. We're not proposing to touch any of those. Our intention is to leave the existing pond. We have no intention of draining it. The only consideration that we would have to make is if that dam is safe, if it's seeping or leaking or, or proposes some danger to downstream properties, we might have to do something to it. But as of right now, we have no intention of, of draining or touching that pond. And then Lauren touched on one of the conditions we've offered up about no development east or north of that riparian buffer. That really restricts the developable area of this site. And then, you know, just, it, it allows us to preserve as much existing vegetation and tree canopy as we can. So, I'm available to answer any questions. Dan Morse is the applicant, he's here with us tonight, and we'll answer any questions we, you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you step away, I'll open it, see if anyone has any questions.
I do have a question about the transportation. I think condition number 10 says that in the event that you construct a public street, you would have to do a stub out. But it looks like in the preliminary plans, that's not.
That's correct, right. We, we really don't have room to put in, if we do a street, we'd have to do a turnaround with a cul-de-sac. And by the time we do that, it kills any upland area that we have to develop. So, we, we don't have any intention to put a public street in.
Okay.
Thank you.
On the topic of transit, with regard to like Old Raleigh Road, are you, are you guys basically offering to do like a fee-in lieu instead of doing like any widening or touching that at all?
Right, the widening, if we have to do widening, it would be in front of those three lots that we're proposing. And then we would dedicate the right-of-way for the ultimate section for the rest of that frontage is the plan.
Mr. Shipman, I have two questions for you. I, I will admittedly have Sam a little concerned that the questions came up at the neighborhood meeting about the speed limit and that you haven't had those conversations before coming to this board.
Okay.
That's a little disappointing.
Sure.
Neighbors, the neighbor, neighbors obviously raised this to you, Russell and the town staff is available, and to not come before this board with that answer is not acceptable.
Okay, sorry about that.
So, that's one. So, I do hope that before this goes, no, I, I don't hope, I expect that before this goes to town council, you will do that. My second question relates to, I, I don't have any sense of where this property sits in a flood, flood plain? I'm wondering if you can address that.
I don't believe there's any flood zones on this property.
Can you get some additional information on that?
We can, yes.
Okay, okay. If you'd be able to do that while we're still sitting here, that would be.
Sure.
Wonderful. Additional questions?
So, Madam Chair, based on the comment that was just made regarding the speed limit, can you help me understand a little bit more about the request to lower the speed limit on Old Raleigh Road as it relates to this particular development?
Absolutely. When neighbors come to the, take the time to come to the neighbor, neighborhood meetings, as well as to, to the public hearings, I take those comments and concerns very seriously and expect that our developers do as well. So, when questions are raised, I expect the developers to do everything that they can to have those questions answered. So, whatever the outcome of that question is, I, I don't know, that's for Russell and the developer to discuss. For folks that don't know, Russell handles our transportation here in the town. And so, I would expect that, that questions that were raised during the neighborhood meetings, that the developer would come before us with those questions answered, and, and don't think it's acceptable that they didn't. So, I, I can't speak specifically to the speed limit, if it should be raised or lowered, or what the process is, but I expect that there's an answer given to, to neighbors.
Just as a point of just information, I'm looking at the town's road ownership GIS map right now. That section of Old Raleigh Road is controlled by the state, so.
Right.
That's what I was.
And that was one of the things that I had identified as well, is that when you look at the thoroughfare plan, Old Raleigh Road is west of, of this location, between the Peakway and Lord Duncan is a minor. And then from the Peakway out to 64, actually just shy of 64, is a major thoroughfare. So, just because the designation is a major thoroughfare, doesn't mean that people should speed, not creating that, that, that argument. But I think it's, it's important that as, as part of this conversation, that we identify what are some of the facts, so.
What are some of the what, I'm sorry, facts?
What are some of the facts?
Yes, which is what I would absolutely hope that the developer would, would come forth with for this conversation.
Sure.
Point, I appreciate you lifting that up and hope that that will be part of the conversation going into Tuesday.
That was, that was oversight on my part, apologies for that. My understanding was that speed limit requests for reduction had to originate either with the municipality or internally to DOT. But yes, for sure, we will have that conversation right after this meeting.
Appreciate that, no, and I, again, very much a layperson here, we have some folks who work in development on this board, that is not me. But what, what I, what I strive to do in my, you know, couple hours left is to, is to educate the public. They don't know whether it's an NC DOT road, a town. They don't know whether it's an NC DOT road, a town of Apex road, if they need to handle it themselves. I don't expect them to know that's where the sausage gets made. That's what the town's responsibility is for. And so even if you didn't know the answer, I assume you do, if you didn't know the answer, coming to the town and then reporting back to either the, um, either the neighbor themselves, um, the neighborhood, or, um, or, or, you know, in your presentation, I think is, is being responsive to the community. And I think that's important.
Sure.
Um, so don't expect our neighbors to know that information, um, but expect that we, in this capacity, help inform. Additional questions? Alright, but.
I have one.
I'm sorry.
No. And you might not know, but Russell might, um, because although, Old, Old Raleigh Road, before and after your site, it, you know, it kind of narrows right there. Do we know like when that has the potential for widening? And I only ask just because there potentially could be like room to work with you on that if it's happening.
I do not know the answer to that question. We have to defer to Mr. Dalton.
You're, I don't know what the hat shape means, Russell. Sorry. That could be a, I have no idea what the answer is. That could be a, it's not happening.
It could be either one.
It could be both.
The short answer is no. Uh, the, the long answer is there's nothing funded in the current ST, STIP. So it's just as development occurs. Um, so if we had to estimate, it's, it's beyond 10 years before any, any state project would be identified out there to widen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, Mr. Shipman, we'll reserve, we'll reserve the option to call you back up again. But thank you for answering the questions. Alright, um, the, um, Courtney Lamarche, Lamansky? Oh my gosh, I'm really horrible at reading.
It's really.
Courtney! Welcome. Courtney, you have three minutes.
I also want to point out too, that we did receive two public hearing emails. I didn't want to forget those.
Thank you so much. I did see, we saw both of those. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Courtney Lamansky. Um, I am the Secretary of the Homeowners Association of Shepherd's Vineyard. Um, I am here to represent, uh, some of our residents about our concerns about the pond, about the streamway, um, that kind of thing. Actually, my house is just right here at the edge of Bridham Way, um, at one of the town easements that goes into the floodplain that is behind Shepherd's Vineyard. Shepherd's Vineyard Greenway is, and the creek behind it is an unnamed tributary of Swift Creek. We accept waters from the, from Food Lion, Grand Central Station, even this property. All goes behind Shepherd's Vineyard. Um, while I hear there is a plan to leave the dam, leave the pond, that's all great. Um, but what will we be doing about the thousands of gallons that will be coming into this floodplain? Shepherd's Vineyard already struggles with flooding down towards the end, um, which is about a mile down, cause that's where we accept everyone else's. Um, because at one point for our community, it was just Food Lion, right? It was just a daycare. Now it's just three houses, but we're still accepting all that water. We can't just accept more water. Some of our houses will flood. The town utility switchbacks, the primary switchbacks, um, for Wellstone Circle, Apache Lane, Smokewood, and Chimney Hill are on our greenway that also accepts the water that would come downhill from this pond. And I'm not saying that it's all of it, but I am saying that we can't just leave it and hope that it works, that wait for the dam to go. Um, are there any provisions like an escrow set aside for this dam for when it goes because of this excessive gallon? Is there, um, any kind of repair work to this pond that we as residents and neighbors that we can expect to see, especially with the widening as well as a possibility? Of speeding, being someone that lives so close to this property, I can tell you that this Apex Peakway, where it meets Old Raleigh Road, that's where the little girl was hit on the Fourth of July. So as far as not even stormwater runoff, but considering that widening with the speeding, it will help the stormwater and help with our safety in this particular part of the neighborhood. Um, I guess my question being, what are our provisions for this pond, for this water, for the speed 10 years from now, 15 years from now?
Bob Wolf?
My name is Bob Wolf. Um, starting in 1994, I taught math mostly and was a head football coach at Apex High School for 18 years. I have, I had, I go Cougars, that's right. I am on the board at Shepherd's Vineyard, and I have lived in Shepherd's Vineyard for 30 years. Um, my concern in this, in this project is density from two points of view. One, we've been, I, I go back before the Food Lion. So I've been there for a long time. That's been a floodplain for a good number of year, oh, ain't it forever. I've got friends that tell me they used to play down there when they were boys growing up here. It's always been marshing. The flooding has grad, has, has dramatically increased over the 30 years that I've been there. It's always been there. But we've been told time and time again that none of the development up here has anything to do with that flooding. Well, they just need to come down there and see it because it didn't used to be this bad. And so now we're coming to bring in more development that's going to cause more flooding. Last week, the water was over a couple of the bridges on our greenway. It was that bad. So more density is going to create more problems. It's going to create more water runoff. And just as Courtney said, the backyards of some people's houses that back up to that are getting flooded already, and it can come all the way up into their houses if it, if it continues to get worse. The second point on the density thing for me is I can see maybe one or two houses there. But from what I remember years ago, all, all of this development over here where all these townhouses are, was originally supposed to be a mixed development of businesses with condominiums on the top. Somehow, and I never heard how or why, that got changed. And now we have a monstrosity of nothing but townhouses over there that does not look good. And we're concerned as a, as a neighborhood that backs up to all of this, about the density, about people coming in, even though it's supposed to be now you're seeing three lots and that's it, of that being overturned somehow because it's happened before. And that, that's a, that's a problem, not to mention the fact that it just doesn't look good. I'm on a board, I'm, I'm on a board out in, in Snowmass, Colorado, and we're fighting some of the same things as far as density on, on a couple of issues out there. And I know that people don't always look at what's going on like that. And I actually used this as an example of density gone awry when I was speaking to that town council out there on behalf of our board. So I, the density problem, the density is a problem for the flooding issue, number one. But also, that's a nice residential area along, all along Old Raleigh Road out there. And if we come in there and put more den, more density and things on there than, and that's not taken care of ahead of time in the planning where it specifically says that this has to be done this way, then we're just, we're just creating more problems and, and not helping the beauty of our, of our area and our town. Thank you.
Go Pats.
What?
Just kidding. Go Pats. Just kidding, just kidding. Friendly banter. Um, Nick Bryant?
I will try and make my comments short. Nick Bryant, 1023 New Dover. I do back up directly to this property. Um, development is, is almost inevitable in Apex. Um, seeing some of the other projects that are happening specifically along Saunders Street, uh, with row houses, uh, and the potential for, um, uh, that to happen by, by having my own home, I'm not really, um, excited about. So, uh, for this project, um, I'm, I'm, I'm happy with the three units. Um, I think that's a, a good approach. However, um, I'm learning tonight that the study in the pond may open that up in the future. And if it, that pond is opened up, uh, and drained, that only gives opportunity for more development, more homes. So instead of developing a third of the property, we're looking at two-thirds of the property, uh, and therefore more runoff and more development. So, uh, my concern, uh, is more around, um, finding a way for, uh, moving forward. The HOA or whomever is in charge of the excess two-thirds of the property, uh, they can't develop that in the fir, in the future. Um, that's really my only concern. Thank you.
Glenn Moss?
Uh, hello, my name is Glenn Moss. And we've been here, I've been here in Apex for 30 years. Um, we have a landscape company here in the town and we've been enjoying the town since, since day one. But we're not big fans of, uh, well, I'm not, I'm also the president of the HOA for the, for the community of, um, Shepherd's Vineyard, which we have thousands of people there. And a lot of us are original, um, to the, to the subdivision, uh, here in Apex. Um, I, I have a lot of concerns about this property. In fact, uh, this is one of these properties that we've been praying that would never be developed. Um, this whole area here is, is actually historical. This, we tried to fight back even Edwards Creek, um, because that's where the old Grisman used to be. And honestly, this whole section used to probably be the high point of Apex where the water shed starts on the top. And this pond here has been here probably before the town was here. This pond here holds a lot of the water for that entire bank there and probably a lot around it. It has contributaries to our creek, which goes to Squid Creek, which splits into the Noose and, um, and Cape Fear River. Um, now the town, you know, this is a new board, so I, I don't fault you. But I mean, I've been working here in this town for decades. And my biggest, you know, pet peeve is, um, a lot of times these ponds are covered up. And shame on them because they're not meant to be covered up because a lot of them are there naturally. But anyway, this pond, we can't afford to cover it up. And we don't even know how they're going to squeeze any development in this lot. But I am okay with the low impact because I understand that development has to happen. Now, when I heard earlier, you said medium density. We have been told low density. So already, we're getting concerned about the little jump in the, in the, in the language. And also, some of the people understand it because I've talked to all the people that live over here. And we were told that these are three lots and three houses. Now it's three per lot. I, so sadly, we just have a lot of, I guess, mistrust. And, um, we just want the board to, to really be diligent on this one, to try to save this property for low density and really be concerned about the buffers and really be concerned about trees. Mostly trees in here are several of, I'm, I don't mean to bore you guys, but I'm, I'm a horticulturist. So the trees are, been there for hundreds of years. So, and if you take away the trees, you're going to have more runoff into that pond, which is really going to break that dam easily. So, but I'm gonna lay, leave it up to you guys to get your experts. I, I think, we even tried to call out the EPA to see if they can come help us, you know, coordinate to see what the, uh, what, what, what we're up against. So anyway, appreciate your time and, and just really, we want to babysit this because we're, we're really worried about it. I only live up the road, um, just on the other side of the hardwood. And we feel like there's a seven acre lot there too that is residential. And my fear is that someday that lot will be conturned into a development and we'll be dealing with the same nonsense or worries that we have with this seven acre lot. And we just want the town maybe to try to save Old Raleigh Road because it is old. And if you have, you have to leave some integrity in the town to beautification, trees, ponds, and not just run it down and destroy it all. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Moss, I, I wanted to let you know, um, that the 2045 land use map classifies this as, this area as a medium, um, medium density residential. I want to let you know that. Um, I don't know what the 2030, I used to actually keep the 2030, the land use map on my phone. So if the 2030 used to be on my phone, I don't know when it changed. But I want to let you know, the most recent land use map has classified it as medium.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anyone who has not signed up who would like to speak? If not, oh, yes, please. You can speak and then, um, and then sign up. Although my pen disappeared, so.
I got this pretty purple one you can use.
Thank you. I don't, I don't, my name's Warren Harvey. I live also backed up right to the pond there in that neighborhood. And I appreciate, uh, both the planning board and the, um, the developer for the information we've gotten ahead of time. It's been really helpful. I just want to clarify a couple of things I've heard from comments and then from the, um, from the applicant. And that is, my understanding is it is still being proposed for just three lots and not three per lot. Um, and I just want to clarify that and make sure I'm hearing the right thing because I, I would have some concern for that. And I would just say too, I think that, um, that pond has been, uh, we live, oh, we live right up behind the pond and right on the stream that comes right behind our house. We have not had any flooding problems. I recognize that happens further down in our, in our, um, on our greenway. And I think that is something to take into consideration. But I feel like this pond really helps to, to, to spread that out. And so I would also just be in favor of seeing the developers, uh, keep, keep that pond and have some way to manage that, uh, because I do think it's an asset in that. But, um, but I also just wanted to ask the, for the clarification on the number of lots that are being, uh, being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. I do believe it's three, but, um, I, my understanding is it's three, but I'm gonna ask Mr. Shipman to come back up as well. I'm, I'm so sorry. So would you mind using this pretty purple pen and signing up? Thank you.
Alright, I'll take my purple pen back.
Um, so clarification, it's three lots only, three houses, not three units per lot. So three only. Um, as far as flood zone goes, I just checked, this property is not in a flood zone. It occurs way downstream of this property. So it's no flood hazard areas here. Um, and then, uh, we'll just address the pond real quick. Again, our intention is to leave that pond as it is. We, we don't want to touch it. We would love to keep it. The only scenario in which we would take it out is if it's seeping and it's dangerous to people who are downstream. If it were to burst and that water would rush downstream. That's the only scenario where we would have to modify it. Um, we would like to preserve it as well. If for whatever reason, we had to drain it because the dam was unsafe, what would happen is that channel, the natural drainage channel would reform and that channel would carry a riparian buffer as well. So the condition that we can't develop north of that riparian buffer would still hold. So in either situation, we can't touch north of that pond or that pond area. It's off limits because of that condition. Secondly, stormwater, uh, we will be putting in a stormwater basin. We will comply with the town's stormwater ordinance that limits the pre-development, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, the post-development runoff to the pre-development levels for the design storms that are in the ordinance. Um, together that with the existing pond that we anticipate will remain, that's a pretty significant storage of runoff that can be accommodated there. And then the discharge from that, from our stormwater pond will be engineered so that we can control that runoff rate and, and limit, hopefully limit downstream impacts.
Mr. Shipman, I know that, uh, maybe I don't know. Um, for, for, I understand it's not in a flood zone.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I believe that land is classified, this is me knowing just enough to get myself in trouble, land is classified in, uh, 100-year, 1,000-year, 25-year.
Correct.
What, can you give the estimate to what this is? Not the estimate, can you let us know what this is?
Well, so FEMA classifies those as 100-year flood zones, which means that's a 1% annual chance of happening every year. There's also a 500-year, um, flood map, which is a 0.2% chance. This is not in either of those storm, those areas. So what it is precisely, I can't say, but it's outside of the 500-year storm.
Thank you so much. That's helpful. Any additional questions for Mr. Shipman while he's here?
I've got, no, go ahead, sir.
No, please.
Any trees on the pond dam? I'm sure there probably is, like there isn't.
I believe there is. I, I have not seen them up close, but I think there is some vegetation there.
No one wants to remove trees, but if you don't remove the trees off the pond dam.
It will eventually be.
Yeah, it's gonna take the dam out eventually. So I think that's probably an alternative.
I'm not aware of any seepage issues at this moment, but we need to get a full, full evaluation done, which we, we wanted to wait until we had the rezoning.
That's gonna answer a lot of the questions that everyone really has.
Correct.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question as well, that, um, I have, have a friend that actually just going through this, the dam is not on her property, but the pond is and the dam failed. She no longer has a pond.
Right.
So, um, going through those processes, just any dam evaluation that you can provide for. So going through those processes, just any dam evaluation that you can provide for. And then if that is drained, would that require an upgrade to the stormwater control measures?
It would, it would change our riparian buffers on site. So we would have to wait a number of months, let the channel reform and then have it reevaluated. And then it would carry those same riparian buffers that are off limits to us for development.
Preston, I jumped in front of you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, 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 because I mean, it's all kind of related. Are y'all still, oh, good. Well, and, and trying to address some of the comments or questions that I've heard relative to. So this property has been owned by an individual or a family. And now they're looking to sell this, this piece of property and allow it to develop in this way with these three lots. We will now have three new lot owners, we'll have three new homes, well, maybe. But three new lots, three new homes. The rest of the, the, of the existing parcel where the wetlands are and where the stream travels from west to east and then falls into the pond, all that will be retained by whom? Will it be a, a, an entity that is created or set up that will be responsible for this pond? Or will it be the current owner? Can you speak to that? Because I think one thing that, that can create concern is, once there was a property owned by Bob. No longer, Bob no longer owns this property. I used to know Bob. Bob maintained this pond. We were buddies growing up, this, that, and the other. Now Bob doesn't own it anymore. Somebody else is, is going to own it. Or you've got three new lots on there, they're not going to have any responsibility over it. So where does the responsibility fall? Can you, can you address some of that?
Yeah, so we will create a new homeowners association for the three lots only. That, the balance of that land would go to the homeowners association. So it would be deeded as, as private or common area and split with resource conservation area. But the homeowners association would own that in perpetuity. And so each of those homeowners will be assessed a fee that would go into a maintenance budget that would cover the liability of that pond.
Great, thank you so much.
Just no questions for Mr. Shipman or Lauren? Thank you.
And I apologize. I just wanted to provide some additional information related to this, how stormwater will be reviewed during the process. And we do have our, Jessica Boland is our stormwater manager as well. And so if we have any follow-up questions, but in, in general, just obviously during the subdivision plan, if this rezoning is approved. Since this parcel is over five acres in size, they will have to do a local flood study to establish the hundred year base flood evaluation site. So that will be reviewed during, and potentially during the subdivision plan process. It is located in the Noose Basin as mentioned. So the, the stream buffer determination, any buffer impacts will be going through NCDQ instead of the town, just based on the Noose Basin. And obviously, the, the dam condition evaluation needs to happen prior to site plan or subdivision plan approval. So if they, if they, if they drain the pond, the location as he, as mentioned through the process and through a little bit of the information I provided. The repair buffers, you know, could change from the pond bank to wherever the new stream bank forms. So ultimately, this will go through state NCDQ, NCDQ versus the town. If there is the breach of the dam, they'll need, they'll need to submit a dam breach plan for the town to review. During that, we would review it for, to see if it meets the above threshold. And if they need a separate four oh one, four oh four permit, which is related to wetlands and state permits and a buffer authorization. So I just want to provide a little bit more information. Hopefully I didn't make a little bit more out of context, but there, just a little bit, yes.
Question, Lauren, what limitations are there to be able to maintain the dam? I mean, that's not necessarily the wetlands, right? It's streams, they have buffers where you can build, alright, and what's off limits. But what limitations do you have in saying, well, this has to be left untouched?
Jessica, do you mind if I, have you come up? She, this is more her expertise than mine.
We're glad you're here, Jessica.
Again, Jessica Boland, Stormwater Engineering Manager. So the dam is to be left untouched. It's a dam safety issue. People can't come in there and, you know, play around on it. I mean, that would be off limits, like they were saying. That would just be left untouched for that reason, just for safety.
And if left untouched and trees are growing in it, that could be detrimental.
That's part of their whole evaluation they need to do before they get site plan approval. So they need to have an evaluation done to see if those trees that are existing are causing an issue, potentially take the trees down, stabilize the dam, rehab it. All of those things that would be permitted, as you know, Lauren was just talking about, before it even became a site plan approved. So we would make sure that happens.
And if they found that there was seepage?
Yeah, I mean, if their recommendation, dam safety or this valuation was to, to breach the dam and let the channel reform. That's, you know, that'd be up to them and we would just make sure that, whichever way they go, they either keep it or they drain it. We would make sure that all the regulations are followed. And they would have to wait that six month period if that were the case to see what reforms and then fifty feet off of that new stream bank would be left untouched.
Appreciate that.
Does that help?
How does the stormwater containment going to play into this as well? Do we feel like we're capturing one hundred percent of the runoff water and releasing it slowly down through that area?
Currently?
Well, with, well, what they have planned is they have three lots and then there's an SEM, that's right next to that.
That's right.
Right, so is that going to be designed, it, it, once it goes through the design phase, if it does? Is that to catch one hundred percent of the runoff and then to release that slowly in?
Well, the, there's a point of analysis that we'll be looking at as plan reviewers, is where the water leaves the site. And at that point of analysis, it has to meet the precondition, pre-development conditions for the one year storm, the ten year storm, and the twenty five year storm. So that's, that's what we look at and that's what Mr. Shipman's going to work on and we review his design to make sure that's consistent with the UDO. That's just what the UDO requires in this basin.
So in theory, well, this is theory. There's not any more water being added to the property than what's being rained on there, right? So it's not creating water. So we're just trying to limit what goes down and how fast it goes and the rate at which it goes away.
Right, now if it's developed, impervious surface will be added and that's what needs to be treated with the SEM. To meet that, at that point of analysis, it has to mimic the pre-development conditions.
Okay, and then are there any ideas possible for any impervious surface areas such as like the driveways, whether or not considered to be kind of like fire truck turnarounds on some areas where they have, I'm not, I can't think of the name of it, but basically pavers instead of standard driveway or other, other ways of minimizing runoff?
Yeah, I mean, you could require, I mean, that could be a requirement or a zoning condition that the, the driveways are permeable pavement or pavers or, or something.
I'm asking this out loud so everybody else can kind of hear kind of how the sausage is made, right? It's not just, here's how it works. Like there's a lot of different layers that are going to go into post a rezoning. Now, this is just, again, just a rezoning. This isn't, this is going to happen, right? Okay, that answers my questions. Thank you.
Okay, sure, thank you.
I actually appreciate your line of question, but, because I was going to ask you to come up and, and, and kind of address that in a similar way. Kind of from a, a stormwater one oh one. In, in my experience in similar settings such as this, when the public comes. We have the advantage of understanding nearly all of the acronyms or the jargon. Some of us have, have done it as a career, as, as Madam Chair pointed out. Some of us are just fantastic citizen planners and have decided that we wanted to volunteer and, 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 and offer our time. And, but we have the advantage of staff teaching us, educating us. And so we, we understand this stuff month in and month out. When the public comes in, generally, they're, they're here for that one item and they're not here again unless something else comes up. And so it can be overwhelming, it can be, it, it can, it can create anxiety because this conversation is very engineering heavy and I don't really fully understand it. And so just from a, kind of a, a quick one oh one perspective. Can you address how and why, for example, we know water flows downhill. There's a law in, in North Carolina that you can't prevent that. If water flows downhill, you have to accept the water. And so I think that's point number one. Number two, it's how that water is accepted is then engineered in a, in an area that is developed. And to the point of, of, to Coach's point. The channeling of that water over time can, can during a, a large rain event make it appear. And, and maybe I want to be careful with not make it appear because some would say it very much is there. That there is an, an increase in the volume or even the rate of, of the, of the stormwater. So can you, from your expertise, address that at kind of a one oh one level for the folks? So that they understand if this does go forward and these, these three lots are developed with these three homes. Kind of what that process looks like, understanding that we are in a developed area and it will continue to develop.
Right. Sure, yeah, but we have requirements in the UDO, when I was talking about having any development post-construction has to meet pre-construction flows, you know, for the one year storm, the ten year storm, and the twenty five year storm in this basin. At that point of analysis where water leaves the site. And it's up to the design engineer to follow our UDO, follow the North Carolina Stormwater Design Manual, which is a state manual, which is what Apex has accepted as our design manual. It's up to the design engineer to figure out how he's going to make that work. He runs a bunch of calculations and we make sure that that's followed with an SEM. And that's, the SEM is designed as an engineered structure, you know, a pond or a wetland, sometimes it's underground. And that's what actually does the, the mimicking of the pre-development conditions. And we have over seven hundred of these stormwater control measures, SCMs, in the town of Apex right now. Like you said, it's a developed, developed area. The SCMs do a lot of good to help, you know. Before those were required, back before, this pre-two thousand, it was required in some areas. But you know, it was, it was a lot worse as far as some development downstream effects, so.
SEM stands for?
Stormwater Control Measure. And that's just a stormwater pond, fancy word for stormwater pond, or the wetland, like I said, or a bio retention cell, rain gardens, things like that.
One thing I like to think of is, is, think of, of TBA and how the dam system along the Tennessee River. Tennessee River is still flowing in the same direction it always has and will continue to. It used to flood X when there was no control. Now there's a series of dams along that. And so if you think about stormwater control in that way, that water's still flowing in the same direction and it has to continue flowing in that. The law says it has to continue flowing in that direction. But it will now, it is now engineered in such a way as to minimize.
Up to that, up to that twenty five year storm, water's kind of being held back really slowly. You know, this is trying to mimic what went on before and the impervious surface was added. That's the engineering behind it.
Thank you.
Sure, did that help? Anything else?
Appreciate the lesson.
We're happy to talk more too offline. I mean, we, we talk to, you know, groups all the time, try to educate them because you're right, it is a little bit tricky if you're not used to it.
And folks are in here one time, you know, for a particular item that is, you know, creating great anxiety.
Yeah, if you want an example of it, there's one just out here on Hunter Street.
That's right.
That serves the town and I've seen it doing some heavy lifting during big storms.
And they also can look nice, you know, that's one of our showpieces.
Yeah, that one's, it's beautiful.
We have about twenty five town-owned SCMs and that's, you know, one we like to show off.
I have a land use question, Lauren, when you're.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Pivoting away from the engineering.
Okay.
There was some concern from the public about the use. And it looks like the proposed use is single family and then accessory apartment. Townhomes would not be allowed.
Correct, townhomes will not be allowed. It's only for, for a single family, so residential house. And then accessory apartment, which is in, basically an accessory dwelling unit that could be either detached or attached. If you, you know, mother-in-law suite sometimes are called or, you know, things like that, so smaller.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you.
And I appreciate you asking that question, Lauren, if you don't mind. Can you speak to another point that, that Coach brought up regarding change of plan? Change of, not only change of plan, but change of plans? And how those things can happen? The comment was made that the townhome plan changed. And so there can be concerns often related to, okay, we go through this process, city council approves it. And then all of a sudden, everybody decides, we're going to do something different. Can you speak to the ordinance process and the, the, the meaning behind the, the, the legal strength behind? What it means when, if a rezoning is approved, it's done by ordinance and that becomes law?
Sure, I'll do my, I'll do my best. So when this is rezoned, this is not just rezoned by owner property, this is rezoned by the actual property itself. So even if someone, if this was approved and the developer sold it and down the road, they wanted to redevelop. This would still only be allowed to have either single family and, you know, attached apartments, which is a minor accessory structure. That's it. If, if, if someone wanted to come in and add townhomes, for example, they would have to go through the entire process again. So starting with, talking with planning staff and our technical review committee through the pre-application process all the way to determining if, you know, the, itself, the property itself and the land use map and the rezoning can actually support townhomes and if, what zoning district, so to go through the entire process again. And then it would get to the planning board for the recommendation and then go to town council for approval. So it'd be either a rezoning amendment, depending off as a putt amendment. So you would see this again. It wouldn't just be a staff administrative process.
So if this gets approved for three lots and, and this amount of, of conservation area? And it gets approved by city council and they're going through the subdivision process and they say, you know what? We'd really like to add a fourth lot. Can you stick a fourth lot in there, Lauren? What would be the response to that?
So I will point out that the site plan that you have seen, have referenced, staff has not reviewed that through the pre-application process. That was just through the neighborhood meeting. So when, if this is approved, they would have to hold another pre-application meeting to review for the master subdivision plan. And to review the conditions and any other UDO, transportation, stormwater requirements. That is the three units per, per acre, which is the density, which would be three lots. Unless, with the SEM, if you count that as a four, because that would have to be on its own lot.
Understood, thank you.
And that's another reason why we, transportation and other folks have asked for conditions because if it's less than four lots, then it's exempt with some UDO requirements. So having the transportation conditions at this time, if they were to come in with potentially, I would have to confirm with the current zoning district if they would have an exempt plat, for example, like there's, there's reasons that we've asked for, for, suggest the conditions at this time. Because if, if they're less than the UDO, they wouldn't be required to during it. So they're offering the, the use.
I'm not recalling whether I closed the public hearing, so I'm going to do that, public hearing is closed. And then I want to open it up and see if anybody has any additional questions for Lauren, Mr. Shipman, or any other staff? And bring it back for conversation, if not, bring it back for conversation and possible motion. Thank you, Lauren.
I hope I answered your question about the land use.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Well Dana, I'll, I'll start off, I'll, I'll break the silence. The only concern, or one of the few concerns that the residents brought up that I have is under the conditions that were offered by Shipman Engineering, and I know what he said. But the first one says a maximum density of three units per acre. So, and they've set thirty percent aside. Thirty percent of the gross parcel will be preserved as RCA. That brings it down to four point two acres potentially. So while he's saying three homes, realistically, we're talking about twelve homes, if my math is working right. The condition doesn't say maximum density of three units, period, it says three units per acre. The condition doesn't say maximum density of three units, period, it says three units per acre.
It's up to Madam Chair. So we, we only want to rezon this once, we don't want to have to come back in front of you again, I'll be honest with you. So the goal, the goal is to put conditions that restrict what we can do, but not handcuff us so badly that when we get to subdivision part, we go, oh, man, we made a mistake and we can't do what we need to do to keep it viable. And so while our intent is only three lots, we put the three, three-unit-per-acre cap on it as a way to demonstrate, well, medium density allows for six units per acre per your code, but let's, let's cut that in half. That doesn't mean we can physically fit twelve units. But that's just a condition cap that, that is in place that if we develop it, we can't go over that cap. But it also gives us some assurance that we won't have to come back and redo this case again.
But you do realize intent in writing is different. Intent is different than what is in writing and what is in writing is, is not what your intent is.
Understood. And, and again, we're not, you know, our site plan was meant as a, as just an illustration of what we intend to do. It's, we understand it's not binding, we understand that's not, it's not been reviewed by anybody other than just an illustration. Our intent was to cut that density down from that medium-density cap in order to say we want to demonstrate that we're trying to lower this.
So for clear, for point of clarification, Mr. Hastings is suggesting that there could be at maximum, based on what is in the application, sixteen units. Is his assessment incorrect?
Sixty?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Well.
Twelve, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yes, twelve. Is, is his assessment incorrect?
That would be the maximum allowed by code with that condition in place, yes.
So his assessment of maximum code allowed, not your intent.
Right.
Maximum code allowed of twelve is correct.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Would you be willing, I hear that you do not want to be handcuffed. I want what is intent, what is intended to be on paper. Would you be willing to clarify that in writing, that there will only be three units?
I would have to defer to the property, to my client. You want to speak about?
Yes. We've only always intended to have, we have three lots here.
Okay. So we could, we could offer a friendly amendment to that, to that.
Yeah, so we, we could add a condition that says a three-lot maximum.
Okay.
Building lots, but what Lauren mentioned, also the S C M has to be considered a lot, is that correct? Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Three housing units?
Three units. I got it. Yeah.
So if.
Is that three units plus A D Us?
Yes.
Right. Right.
Okay.
As long as we can.
Three, three buildable lots.
Three residential lots.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
Three residential lots.
Those folks are considering making a motion. Please have it include this condition for this conversation. Thank you, Steph, for pointing that out.
I appreciate your willingness and openness to do that, but I would also point out, I appreciate that, you know, medium-density allowing up to six units per acre and that you've already cut it in half for something that's, when we're, I mean, I don't need any feedback from you on this, but I mean, this is land use plan for medium-density residential. The proposal is medium-density residential and you're further restricting it to just single-family home. So I'm okay with the, you know, giving you additional flexibility, but if you're, again, if you're.
That's kind of what we were thinking is, is the code would allow that six units per acre, let's, let's cut it. But understood, we can, we can have the condition to limit it to three buildable lots.
So are we offering that up as a condition now?
Yes, we would offer that as a condition.
Okay, do we need to rewrite that condition into the?
I think we would need a, a motion to do that. And I'm, I'm not entirely, I'm not entirely sure that that is where everyone on the board sits, that that is a condition that folks would be willing to adopt.
Would it not be just, just part of our motion?
It, it could be.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure if that's where everybody sits and so.
Right, right, that's a good point.
Could we get staffs up to say the language to, with the intent?
You, you could make a motion, that is worded, you recommend approval if the applicant amends the density, excuse me, if the applicant reduces the density to three residential lot, limits the residential density to three residential lots. I'm not getting that quite right, but. So you're indicating to council that your approval is coming only if the applicant amends their condition from three dwelling units per acre to three residential lots?
In my opinion, that's, that's more than reasonable for a six-acre lot in Apex. I mean, three residential, three residential lots, that's, that's very favorable. Thirty percent resource conservation area, dedicated right way. I think it's very reasonable. But we've, it's been a long time since we've seen six acres with three residential lots, let's be honest. I can't remember the last time, that, it's been a long, it's been a long time.
It's been a long time since you've seen Wake County Public Schools say they have sufficient capacity.
That shocked me right there, I had to read it twice.
Was that a motion I heard brewing?
That would be a motion, that would be a motion.
Need some help with drafting what that looks like.
That'd be a motion to approve rezoning twenty-five Z Z zero-seven. With, with the amended to three residential lots. That Amanda will come up with the correct wording for.
I think I have it, so you're recommending approval. Excuse me, I went too far. With an additional condition to limit density to three residential lots total.
Down there?
And your name, sir? For the record.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I could second, is there a second?
All in favor, say aye.
So before.
Sorry.
Discussion. So I think that, first of all, the conversation, the discussion, our deliberation, I think, has been excellent on this. I think it's been, this is a really tough case and, and I appreciate that, 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 that question, that analysis there at the very end. Because I think that got right to the heart of it, in addition to these other very important areas. And I've struggled with the, whether it's, it's a three-unit-per-acre or just these three lots. But I do think it's important to point out for, for, some might disagree with me on this, but for the benefit of, of the adjoining community, that the resource conservation area is as large as it, as it is. Obviously, we understand there are flooding concerns despite flooding being engineered or, or stormwater being engineered. But I do think it's important that we identify, no matter where we kind of come down on the number of units and the density, that the resource conservation area is as large as it, as it is. And, I mean, it kind of has to be, but, but severely limits the developability of the site.
Yeah.
So with that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, additional? Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? No? And I'm going to add, just for the record, I'm saying no because I actually have, because I'm not going to write it down, I am, sorry. The, I actually have concerns about this site being developed at all, the potential of the dam. I have expressed concerns and we have covered up ponds that have dried up for ten years. Climate change is real, whether folks, some folks don't believe it is, climate change is real. We, before last week, I believed it, I'm even, you know, more affirmed last week. The more that we take away this, it really concerns me and with my heart, like with my heavy, heavy heart, I have a huge concern that any disruption to this particular lot and my heart goes to the owners of this lot because I know they're interested in selling. But any disturbance to this area with the two streams coming through is, is just going to cause additional flooding in that area in general. And for as much stormwater, I am very much appreciate the towns, how we look at stormwater, our approach to stormwater, but the reality is, is Mother Nature is Mother Nature and she's just going to keep going. And if, if you need any, look at, look at N C twelve on the Outer Banks is my favorite place on earth, how N C twelve has moved in the decades, over the decades. And so I fear what the landowners in this area will face. And so for that, I am voting no. But I, we have followed the U D Os. We have as much information as we can. This rightfully moves forward to the town council with the recommendation of everyone else, but just in my heart of hearts, I, I have concerns that this will become a flooding issue, so I'm voting no. It passes minus one. All right, the next item on our agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
One thing that I like to do and I, forgive me, I would, maybe I would, I would ask that, that any Madam Chair, do this each, each time, is that, especially when we've got a, a significant number of concerned citizens, identify, no matter what the vote is, that there are additional public hearing opportunities coming up.
Yes, please elaborate.
Can you, no, I'm asking.
Oh, okay.
Can you please share?
Happy to do so.
The date of the town council meeting and that there is a public hearing there as well, that this is not finished.
Yes, thank you for that, happy to do that. This will become before the town council in two weeks?
Yes, August twenty-sixth at six P M.
So, so neighbors, other community folks who are listening, will have an opportunity to, to weigh in conversations before the town council. Also, feel free to email the town council, I think, at allcouncil@apex. I'm not going to try, email the council as well. And yes, plenty of opportunity to weigh in. Thank you for that suggestion.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, so we are going to move on to new business. Item number one, Jenna, the purpose of this item is to re receive updates on the Tingen Road bicycle and pedestrian crossing.
Good evening. So tonight Russell Dalton and I will be presenting new business item number one, the Tingen Road bicycle, Tingen Road bicycle and pedestrian crossing feasibility study. Does that, does that help? Okay, thank you. So an agenda that we'll be going through tonight, starting out with a project overview, then getting into the four design alternatives, then providing a summary of public engagement, the recommended alternative, next steps in the feasibility study process. And then at this point, staff will be recommending the tunnel alternative and will be recommend, will be requesting a recommendation from planning board to town council at this point. So starting off with the project overview. So the project history, the existing Tingen Road at grade crossing of the railroad is required to be closed upon the opening of the Apex Peakway Southwest Connector Bridge, which is currently under construction, is, is anticipated to be complete in fall of twenty-twenty-seven. The pedestrian and bicycle, either tunnel or bridge, is, is proposed to replace the existing at-grade vehicular crossing and C S, and C S X does not support an at-grade bicycle and pedestrian crossing at this location. So we're looking at either a bridge, a bridge or tunnel option. The State Transportation Improvement Program includes design funds for this project. So the purpose of the feasibility study that's underway is to study the opportunity to maintain connectivity for cyclists and pedestrians across the C S X S-line railroad tracks at or near the existing Tingen Road crossing, as well as determine the relative need of this project and whether to move forward with final design. The study area for this project is outlined in this exhibit on the right in red. And the four design alternatives that Russell will be presenting are all on the west side of Tingen Road in order to minimize impacts to the properties along the east side of Tingen Road. So on the less, on the left side of this slide is an exhibit that displays the existing and planned active transportation network. And here again in the middle is the study area. And then there are four potential grade-separated bicycle and pedestrian crossings within the larger vicinity of this project, displayed with the pedestrian crossing symbol, so there are four shown here. So once Tingen Road is closed at the railroad tracks, the closest bicycle and pedestrian access across the railroad to the west will be at the Apex Peakway and to the east will be along South Hughes Street to East Williams Street. If the Tingen Road grade-separated crossing is constructed, it would connect to existing sidewalk along South Salem Street, existing sidewalk along Tingen Road, as well as existing sidewalk along James Street. Additionally, there is proposed greenway to the west of South Salem Street, proposed shared lane markings along South Salem Street, as well as proposed bike lanes and side path along James Street and proposed side path along Tingen Road. The exhibit on the right displays adjacent development and infrastructure projects, again with the red outline marking the study area. It's anticipated that bicycle and pedestrian access and connect, or the demand for bicycle and pedestrian access and connectivity along Tingen Road and into downtown is going to continue to increase with proposed development plans in the area, such as Veridia, the N C Children's Hospital and Grace Christian School, as well as the extension of Justice Heights Street to the Apex Peakway, displayed on this exhibit. And the South Salem Street Bike Lanes Project, displayed here, as well as the proposed mobility hub that was discussed earlier off of East Moore Street. And this S-line mobility hub would serve as a center, as a center for transfers for proposed local and regional bus routes. So I'm going to hand it over to Russell to present the four design alternatives.
Good evening. So before we review the design alternatives, we wanted to show you a, a overview of the format for how these are presented. So first of all, this is a plan view, so this shows the planned layout of the route crossing over the railroad track with existing features labeled. Down below that, we actually have what's called a grade profile. So that'll show you how it's climbing to get up and over, or in the case of the tunnel, actually underneath the railroad. And then there's also a legend, which will show you different features on the plan view, which includes asphalt greenway, concrete sidewalk, proposed structure, bridge or tunnel, the proposed pavement to be removed, which is the Tingen Road crossing, which is actually going to be removed with the Peakway project, which would happen in advance of a grade separation here, as well as existing property lines. And there were some major water lines in the project, which we were conscious of trying to avoid with our project. So for the first alternative, what we've called the north overpass loop, and the reason we call that is because we actually have a, a design that loops over on itself on the north side of the tracks. So if you follow, currently, there is the traffic signal here at Justice Heights Street and Tingen Road. There is a pedestrian crossing at that location. So with this design, there would be an extension of a ten-foot side path along the east side of Tingen Road, that's the N C fifty-five side. So it would run along the existing alignment of Tingen Road over on the shoulder. Then it would cut back across prior to the railroad tracks and follow along parallel to the railroad tracks, or it would be climbing in grade until it gets to the point of being on a structure. So this would be elevated structure that would continue down almost to the point of intersecting Salem Street. It would be a switchback, which would then take it back toward the direction of Tingen Road. Then that structure would loop over the ten-foot side path down below it, take another right-angle turn, another right-angle turn before crossing the railroad tracks, another right-angle turn back toward the elementary school, another switchback, coming back down to grade before it leaves the structure and loops around another switchback and loops back down to James Street. It's important to realize, the reason we have to have all these turns and switchbacks is because we need to meet A D A compliant grades. Requires quite a bit of distance to make up. Additionally, you know, one of the concerns is why can't you just, one of the questions, why can't you just go straight across the Tingen Road? For one thing, it's, it's on an angle, so we're trying to cross the railroad tracks at perpendicular, which is helpful when you're constructing a structure, but also we need to be able to make up those grades and have enough room for the, for the greenway to actually connect to get over. So you're going quite a bit, you know, quite a bit further in the air when you're trying to get over the railroad tracks than you'd normally anticipate. Down below, you can see the vertical grade profile, so that gives you an idea of where, you know, where along the route that you're, you're actually getting up and above grade. And you can see this, this peak here for where the railroad tracks are located, where the, where that. And you can see this this peak here for where the railroad tracks are located, where the where that structure is going directly over the tracks. There are a couple of examples over to the right-hand side. So you can see here's the Crabtree Creek Greenway. I'm sure that shows um a greenway which includes both the um the path on grade as well as a structured portion of the path. And then also um in in number two below, it's that same greenway, but you can see an example of how you've got a a bridge actually going over the path. So that gives you an example of what that north overpass loop actually looks like in reality. So the alternative two, this is a design of a bridge, but without any loops over itself. Um, and what I I failed to point out in the previous one, that's also in this one, we do have some bypass um steps on each side of the railroad tracks. So if you don't, uh if you're if you're able and and don't want to take the entire route, we were trying to figure out a way you could shortcut that to actually take some steps. So if you don't have a bike with you, if you're just walking, that gives you an opportunity to not have to walk as far, but you still have to go up those steps. So on this one, it's the same same route along Tingen Road. You're on the east side of Tingen Road. Um, traveling down along the shoulder on a ten-foot path before you cut back across. Um, then you're climbing up to grade. You go down to a uh a switchback. Where you're coming back around before you take a right angle turn, go over the tracks, take another right angle turn and go down to another switchback. Um, and then the path curves back down around to to James Street to meet at grade at that location. And you can see here, these are the bypass steps on each side of the track. Um, this location um similar to the previous, except you don't have that. It doesn't loop over itself on the north side. An important thing to point out with this one, shorter route, but it is steeper. Um, so we had to have some some landings here to make up for that to meet A D A. So that is a trade-off when you're dealing with a shorter route trying to get over the same elevation of the tracks. Um, this option includes both north and south overpass loops, so quite a bit more elaborate. In this case, you're instead of going down Tingen Road with the ten-foot path, you're actually traveling along Salem Street from the intersection of Justice Heights Street. So you're continuing along Salem Street adjacent to the water tower. Um, you curve, um take a curve, S curve through here. Um, come along up the path, climbing in grade. There is a set of bypass steps at this point. Um, there is a switchback um where you turn back and you loop over again. So this is similar to that that north loop in that first option. Take a right angle turn, another right angle turn, come down, take another right angle turn, go over the tracks. Uh, take another right angle turn. You're coming back down to grade on this structure as you loop back around um back down to James Street. So pretty long route, um but it it does it does travel along Salem Street, which is different than the first two. Um, you can see it's a it's a fairly gradual. It's not as steep as alternative two. So ha- having this extra distance does provide you a a little bit, you know, less less steep of a route. And again, over to the side here, we've got example of greenway on grade, as well as the Crabtree Creek Greenway with a with a zoomed out example of where it it loops back on itself. Um, similar to that other um option one that showed that that loop.
Can you real quick?
Yep.
Pardon my i- interruption. Identify, I'm 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 sitting here looking at at Google View.
Yep.
And um how you would get through the intersection again, through the signalized intersection again?
Sure. So um at at Justice Heights Street and Tingen Road, there's currently a um, there's currently a crosswalk here. So this is a signalized crosswalk to go from one side of Salem Street to the other. There's a refuge island here, and then there's a yield controlled um high-vis pedestrian crossing for this lane. So this is if you're on Tingen Road, traveling toward downtown Apex, there is a slip right turn lane where you have to yield to pedestrians at that point. So it's a combination of the two.
Okay, I guess that was what, so if you're traveling um uh down Salem Street from from town. And towards the tower, but you're on the, if you're traveling down and and you're on the right-hand side of the street. You're you're saying you would, you would cross over into that refuge?
Yeah, so in alternatives one and two, both of those are going down Tingen Road, so that's correct. You would you would cross down in alternatives one and two and travel down the east side of Tingen Road. For alternative three, and this is one thing we haven't explored yet, but that'd be in this next phase of design. Um, to for this one, we would have to have an additional crosswalk somewhere. Um, either you're either you're going down and crossing a new crosswalk at Justice Heights Street to get across the road.
Okay.
Or you're having to get across, yeah.
Okay, that's what, because you know, since there's a sidewalk on both sides of Salem, for the first two options, I was thinking, well, how easy is that? Because you just would stay on that that side of the street.
Correct.
Or cross into the refuge. Okay, but you've answered it. So it doesn't exist. There's not another crosswalk, but one would be required.
That's correct. Yeah, we would have to upgrade the signal with an additional crosswalk in this one. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so for the final one, which is the tunnel, so this is this is a surprising option. Um, and the project was even called the pedestrian and bicycle pedestrian bridge. So this deviates even from the from the project name, starting out, and what's actually in the state T I P. But this option, similar to alternative three, um you would travel down Salem Street, past the water tower. You're you're pretty close to, the tunnel works out really well as far as not needing as much distance to actually get to grade because of the elevation going under. The railroad tracks are actually pretty high. Um, so you're if you follow the vertical profile here, you can see how closely you are to existing grade before you actually go under the railroad tracks. So as opposed to the bridge, the tunnel works out really well on that side without having to make up as much grade to go under as you do have to go on over. Um, so when you do um come around that curve and go under, um you do have to make some a s- couple of switchbacks. Um, and occur and 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 go through a curve to get back to James Streets. There's a little bit of extra extra work that has to be done over there, but there is a set of steps that was required for that. So in this option, you don't need steps on the on the Salem Street side, but over on the James Street side, there are some bypass steps to help shorten that route a little bit. So this one's, uh, we got some examples over here. So this is a White Oak Creek Greenway in Cary. This was an example of boring under um the railroad track, um which is requires a little bit more depth than what we might actually entertain for this project. Which is actually open cut and using what called what's called jump spans to alternate railroad traffic. So to maintain railroad traffic, but actually do an open cut operation to put in the culvert. So that culvert would probably look more similar to alternative two here, which is a box culvert. Uh, the box is um, the box, you don't have to go down quite as deep. And that's important when you're looking to get positive drainage to avoid any kind of flooding issues or having to have a pump. Um, and then finally, al- alternative three is just an aerial view of that top one, the White Oak Creek Greenway, where that tunnel daylights to give you an idea of what that looks like. Um, and also in the two options, it's nice to compare. So the one at the top, um it does have lights in it, but those are motion sensor lights uh will come on at night. So it's not quite that dark when you actually go through there. The one below is an older uh greenway tunnel on Cary Parkway. Um, so those lights are on, so you get to see what that is. And it's it's an older style. I don't believe those are motion activated. I think they just only come on at night. So um summarizing all this, so you don't have to look back at all the alternatives, but um the first three, as we talked about, are a bridge. Um, the last one is a tunnel. Um, if you if you're looking at structure length, this is a huge factor in the cost of the project. So the more you can minimize the structure length, the much more affordable this project's going to be. So alternative one, that north overpass loop has got a lot of structure on that. Um, the next next longest one would be alternative three with the north and south overpass loops, followed by alt two. And then finally, the shortest one is the tunnel. It's just over a hundred feet of tunnel on the project, which is is relatively short. Um, so these are some comparisons for A D A um walkable distance. So alternative three, you know, these are not using the bypass steps, but if you stay just on the on the greenway grade. Um, the longest one is alternative three, followed by alternative one, then alternative two, finally, alternative four. The shortest route overall is the tunnel. Um, so alternative two and four are actually not too far apart in terms of overall distance. If you use the bypass steps, it makes alternatives one and two seem a lot more reasonable in ter- in terms of overall walking route. So they're all pretty comparable. Um, you know, one, two, and four. Um, alternative three, even with the bypass steps, um is still a very, very long route. It's hard to shorten that one. Uh, if you look at the grades, alternatives one, three, and four are all um what we consider moderate grades, that five percent. As we talked about, the bridge without the loops um requires much steeper approaches. Um, so that's an eight percent grade that requires landings. Um, and and going along with the structure cost and the length of the overall project, alternative one is is considered probably the highest cost. We won't actually get good cost numbers until the next stage of design, um when we settle on an alternative. But just based on the structure here, um that would be the highest. Followed by, you know, two and three would be somewhere around the middle range, whereas the lowest cost overall would be the tunnel. Um, we talked about talk about relative comparisons of costs. The consultant was was reluctant to give us like a magnitude at this point because the structure plays into it so much. Uh, but we're not talking about just a few dollars of difference. You're talking about, you know, multi-million dollar project, which could have huge, huge differences in cost. Um, as far as the approaches go, we talked about alternatives one and two, your approaches go along that shoulder of Tingen Road, whereas alternatives three and four. Um, the approach is actually that greenway extension, that that side path extension along Salem Street, um down to where you begin crossing. Um, none of them require landings except for, as we talked about, the bridge without the loops, which is steep and requires landings um along that route. The most switchbacks are actually the one with the north overpass loop, alternative one, whereas all the rest have have two switchbacks, have two switchbacks each. Um, we also wanted to get a rough estimate of tree clearing to compare, and it is very preliminary at this stage. Um, but um the least least amount of tree clearing would be alternative two, which is the bridge without loops. Um, followed by the tunnel, and then the most most tree clearing would be alts, alts one and three. Um, and but they're all relatively equivalent between somewhere between one and two acres of of tree clearing. So if there are any que- are there any questions going back to alternatives or turn over to Jenna for public engagement?
I have some, um, so in terms of the safety, I like the motion sensor. I've been through the Cary, the greenway one. I know what that does. And what about on the out on either side? How are we going to, is it going to be well lit on either side of that, just in terms of public safety? What are we thinking?
That's a good question. I mean, we would, along the greenway route, we could explore pedestrian scale lighting. Um, either ballard lighting or like shorter pedestrian area lighting. Um, we will have to consider um adjacent uses in the area and make sure we don't have spill over that's going to cause any complaints. Um, but that is a good point and something we'll bring up with our consultant for the next phase um to highlight.
Okay.
Russell, would um solar powered lights be an option too that could be explored?
We we could explore that. I mean, typically with uh, we work with Apex Electric on lighting products. So if there are solar options, um we would we would definitely explore that with them.
How much is going to have to go into, um, as Preston pointed out, since there isn't actually a crosswalk there right now to get to that? How involved is that to uh make it either crossing the Tingen from the Little Median or crossing Salem? Does one of those seem to be a better option just from what you're seeing right now? I mean, that is a busy intersection and you've got, you know, coming left off of Tingen, the Median, going right. You're already backing up the right turn, but the people who are trying to turn left with the reds. Have is has that been studied yet in terms of feasibility of what's the best option for pedestrian safety?
Um, it's not been studied yet, and that is important to point out, that that signal was originally installed as a temporary traffic signal. Because it's all the volume that's coming from the Tingen roadside, which that's going to be closed to vehicular traffic, so you won't have that volume anymore. But the town is actively working on the um Justice Heights Street extension to connect to the Peakway. So that'll bring additional traffic through Justice Heights Street. Um, as well as the concerns about pedestrians crossing there may provide some justification to keep that traffic signal. Um, if it doesn't remain a full vehicular traffic signal for some reason, if D O T is not open to doing that. Uh, we would still explore an option for signalizing pedestrian crossings there. Um, so either way, we're going to have to revisit that intersection, working with N C D O T. Um, I think, um, you know, bottom line is we're going to have to provide for pedestrian crossing somewhere along that area in Salem Street and Tingen. And we would advocate for a signalized crossing, however that however that needs to happen.
Thank you.
That's a great question. And Russell, um, so you've addressed, one of my questions is is that the item number four or or alternative number four, same situation at that intersection. Um, and um. And the amount of the volume of traffic there at peak times um is 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 great, obviously. The side path that would travel along the south side of S- of Salem Street down towards the the tank and beyond. Am I seeing your illustration correct? Would the entry point be? I just did a kind of quick and dirty measurement, from the intersection to where Salem Street bottoms out. There's a fire hydrant down there at the bot- before you get to Salem Creek Drive. It um looks like it's about seven hundred feet. Is it, is the entryway? Where Salem Street bottoms out? Am I making sense?
No, it doesn't go down that far.
It doesn't go down that far?
No, it's to that driveway right by the water tower. It doesn't go all the way down to Salem Creek.
Ah, okay, okay. That was what I misunderstood.
About half of what you.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it is, as you can see in this vertical profile, it is it is going, it's going, it's following grade going down. But as far as Salem Street goes, it's correct, it's it gets it gets lower the further further west it goes.
Yeah, well, and my my vision's not good, even even with my glasses. So um, so that's why I couldn't tell exactly where the entry point was um uh relative to. Uh, or how far down you were going down south, South Salem Street. Is there? Can, should I assume, i- is South Salem Street D O T?
Yes, it is. South of N C fifty five, it's D O T.
And then are there plans to to widen Salem Street in that section? Do you know?
No, it's it's actually uh, Shero's designated on our transportation plan as far as bike facilities. So it's um, it's not going to be much much wider than it is today. I mean, there may be a shoulder there, there, so there may be some shoulder widening, but it's not designated for being like a a multi-lane road in the future.
Which I support. I just, because of the volume in that area at at peak times, h- having the path. Close to the road would be very uncomfortable on someone. So I was curious if if there's not a plan to widen Salem Street, obviously there may be curb work. Um, is the plan for the new path to be set back away from the road? Um, it appears as though, I mean, is all of that property owned by either the town or D O T?
Um, so we um, we own, town owns water, the water tower property. For all these options, we're actually getting on another parcel, um the furthest down Salem Street, where it where it leaves the road, as you can see here at the tunnel, where that number two is. That is owned by a private party. So the town would have to acquire um all or a portion of that parcel um for all the alternatives. As well as the parcel on the other side of the railroad tracks, which is owned by Wake County Schools.
Sure, okay. So it looks like I O M development. It's a triangular piece?
Correct, yes.
Okay, understood. Just getting that that path away from Salem Street um would be, okay, great.
That's a good point. I think for the design phase, for the detail, we'll have to look at that and see what that typical typical verge utility strip width is. Uh, we would um definitely advocate for curb and gutter along that section and make sure that we set that curb and gutter where it doesn't have to be moved in the future.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions or are we ready to hear about public engagement? All right.
So in May, we held a design charrette on May twenty second at the senior center. And the first part of that design charrette involved a smaller stakeholder meeting, and that included representatives from the town, N C D O T, Campo. Um, the Apex Elementary School and the and residents from the Justice Heights neighborhood. Following the stakeholder meeting, a larger public meeting was held, and there were forty-six attendees. And thirty thirty attendees provided comment forms. Following this, the design charrette, an online comment form was was available from June third to June seventeenth, and it received seventeen respondents. So when asked about the overall impression of the proposed project, eighty-one percent of respondents noted either very positive or somewhat positive. While six percent noted very negative or somewhat negative. When asked for their preferred alternative of the four that Russell presented, the vast majority of respondents shared that their preferred alternative was offer alternative four, the tunnel. At thirty people, followed by alternative two, the bridge without loops, at six respondents. And and the least preferred was alternative one, the north overpass loop. So I'll provide a high-level summary of public comments that we heard multiple times. And then Russell's going to get into a little more of that when he provides information about the pros and cons of the tunnel alternative. So individuals shared that they recommended that we provide adequate lighting and visibility, getting to your point, and to incorporate public art. And there was also a question of the cost and the investment, given the number of users. There were comments to provide a safe route to Apex Elementary School, overall a preference for the shortest and most direct path. Comments to minimize the steep grades along that crossing and to provide connections to existing greenways and. along that crossing, and to provide connections to existing greenways and that planned, existing sidewalks and that planned greenway, as well as comments to maintain pedestrian crossings of South Salem Street to Justice Heights Street after Tingen Road is closed, given that that area is currently signalized, where we've been talking about. And then I will hand it back to Russell to share our recommended alternative. If there are any questions about public engagement?
I think you're good. Thanks.
So we, we established some key points for pros and cons for the tunnel versus the bridge alternatives, because generally that's what, that's what came out, that's what popped out of this, you know, the talking with people about it, getting that public input. So the tunnel had the most public support, was also the least anticipated cost. A lot of that was due to like the shorter distance, least change in grade, the shortest structure. It was also less potential impact of water lines, which is also consideration for utilities, whereas we had some concerns with, with the bridge structures, although those aren't insurmountable if we decided that the bridge was better for other reasons. So some of the comments also considered a tunnel, less of a visual impact to the surrounding community. So one of the things was a bridge, it's going to be pretty high up in the air, it's going to be very visible. So maybe not everybody would like that look, no matter how, you know, no matter how beautiful you make the bridge, they may not want to look at a bridge regardless. So some of the cons for, for doing the tunnel, we do need some strong justification for CSX when we do propose that. And we did talk to our consultants about it, and they have some experts that they were able to talk to. We had members of Rail Division on. So CSX is the next step after we go through this feasibility study phase, determine a, an alternative that we settle on, we would enter an agreement with them, where they would actually review design plans as we get into preliminary and final design and provide input. So it's just something to keep in mind. We feel like we have that strong justification, that there's a big enough difference, the impacts, the cost, everything that's involved with doing a bridge versus a tunnel, it makes sense to do a bridge. And, and there may be options, what we show over to the, over to the side here, which I'm going to talk about now. CSX might favor boring under versus an open cut. So open cut with temporary bridging is what our consultant recommended. Typically, you would associate that with like putting in a box covert, which is what you would typically do for new construction. If you have to bore under, it requires a little bit more depth. We have about, beyond what we would typically do for an open cut with a box covert, we have about another five feet of depth to play with before we start running into drainage issues. So that's just something that, that we'll have to consider. But, and it, and it does create a little bit longer route if you have to bore under, because obviously it goes a little bit deeper. So you have to have a little bit of distance and path that are, that's added to make up that difference, difference in elevation to meet ADA. So there were some concerns. People cited concerns with safety, visibility, and cleanliness. So with a tunnel comes some safety concerns because people, you know, going naturally down into a tunnel, concerned about it being dark, that they can't be seen as well as if they're going up under a structure on a bridge, that, you know, so, so those are some of the things we'll have to deal with. The lighting is a good comment, you know, having lighting, not just within the bridge, it's under the tunnel itself, but on the approaches. We did talk about tree clearing, so we might need to do a little bit extra tree clearing to provide good lines of sight in there. We could certainly supplement with some ornamentals, but we have to think about like, from a safety perspective, is it really easy for people to be able to see what's going on in and around the tunnel from different areas, particularly if police are out on patrol, that they can easily see that without having to actually go physically in there on a routine basis. So those are generally pros and cons. You have any questions on any of the, any of the issues brought up?
Is there anything mentioned as far as the, if you do have to bore, what the cost variance could be, if you have to go that route?
That's a good question. It would, boring might be comparable to, if not a little bit more expensive than doing the open cut with the jump spans. There's challenges with, obviously with both, with jump spans, you're doing like temporary structure versus boring under, it may just be interruption to rail traffic, but you're not actually having to put up a temporary structure. So that's something we'll talk to the consultant about when we go to the next phase as far as considerations for how, or, you know, if, if the tunnel is actually chosen, if we, if county council ultimately recommends that, that's, those are the options we'll have to consider. You know, I will say, I mean, looking, looking at it, we would prefer obviously doing the open cut with the jump spans, just to avoid the extra concern with mainly the depth, longer route, potential drainage issues that we might get into.
Other questions for Russell?
So the next steps. So for late 2025, once we get a determination of our preferred alternative, we will get functional design and get a cost estimate. Then we will take that back to the public for a meeting to get more input, since we'll be sharing more information. In early 2026, we will have another touch point with planning board and council to, to get approval, hopefully, of, of next steps to move forward. So one of the concerns with the project was questions about, do we want to go all in with final design, assuming we're going to build this, or do we want to start with a feasibility study, figure out what we're getting into before we spend the extra money to go that extra step? So that's what we're going to do is provide that final touch point to find out if, if the planning board and town council really are interested in going to that, the next step of final design, which would mean then we're going to try and seek funding for construction on this project. And then following those meetings, we'll issue the final feasibility study report. So for tonight, what we're asking is for a motion to recommend the town council select the tunnel alternative, which is alternative four, as the preferred alternative for the grade separated bicycle and pedestrian crossing of Tingen Road and proceed with functional design.
Any additional questions for Russell or Jenna? All right, I feel like you've teed it nicely up for us, so I will look, look to the board for discussion or possible motion.
This is great. I mean, I know it's still very early on in the process, but I, I'll use my friendly neighbor down the street, Daniel here, where we live in this neighborhood area. So I've always felt a little landlocked with, yeah, you can't really cross over the railroad, especially when I had kids in strollers, like good luck. Like really, if you want to get out of that little block, you're crossing 55 or crossing a railroad track. So love the idea of additional connectivity to open up pathways for pedestrians.
Yeah, and that's a good point too about, you know, kids in strollers and everything, because you have Apex Elementary, that's like right there, you know, and with this being potentially part of like safe routes of the schools, I think it's a huge benefit, especially considering that the tunnel is a shorter length than having to have, you know, go up, you know, a grade with a bridge and like getting a stroll around those sharper turns.
Kids on scooters and bikes and.
Yeah. So, so yeah, I, I definitely, especially, you know, as Alyssa mentioned, like being in the neighborhood, I really support this because, you know, I walk my dog by that, by, you know, St. Mary Amy, you know, every morning, and I see the amount of traffic. I see, you know, people like out for a run, out for a jog, you know, with their kids, walking their dogs. And I think that to have that connectivity maintained would be very key for not just like our neighborhoods, but the people across the tracks, you know. Yeah.
That sounded like a motion.
Does anybody else have any comments before I do? I'm making a motion to approve.
Could I, could I read what we have here? Recommend that council select tunnel alternative identified as alt four as a preferred alternative for the grade separated bicycle and pedestrian crossing a Tingen Road and proceed with functional design.
Thank you, Diane.
You got that, Daniel?
That's perfect, yeah.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who's second?
Thank you, yes, second.
Tim, Tim's second.
Oh, well, second, Tim.
Tim's second?
Yep.
Tim's second?
Sorry, thank you.
You're good.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. I'm excited about this. I know we're on the very early stages. All right, item number two under new business.
Possible motion regarding UDO changes.
Good evening, Chair and the board members. It's good to see you. I get to be your last one of the night, so there we go. It'd be my pleasure. I'll try not to keep you too long. So we'll just get through this. So tonight, we're here to propose some amendments to the UDO. In December of 2024, the North Carolina Supreme Court heard a case known as School Dev ELLC versus the Town of Wake Forest. And the issue there was that a developer came in to build a charter school.
We lost.
The live stream, the live stream's not going to have it. So is IT able to come out and help us?
I'll check.
Should we adjourn? Nope, it looks like it's coming back up.
I'll wait till you get the go ahead.
Oh, there it goes.
We're good.
Amanda, we're good.
Oh, okay.
Did we check to see if the live stream's working?
Is it up on the other screens?
Yes. I have this effect that people flood when they see me come up and the stream goes down. Good, thank you.
These numbers.
Yeah, just.
Ah, that was good. That was good. I like that.
All right, so this case.
Ready for the story.
Yeah, absolutely. So this case, what was going on in Wake Forest, there was a charter school that thought they were meeting the ordinance, that they were required to provide pedestrian pathways to all surrounding residential property, or surrounding residential property. The court found that surrounding was too vague and did not express the intent that we, they wanted to see it actually go to all residential property around. So they, they did find it was too ambiguous, and so they did rule that any, that further considerations need to be made, and that the language should be less ambiguous going forward if that is the intent of the town and the local ordinance itself. So in collaboration with the town's legal department, we're presenting some amendments to the UDO to remove some ambiguity around language that clearly, we believe clearly defines and the intent and the purpose of the ordinance. As you can see, outlined in your staff report and on the screen in front of you, there's lots of different sections from multiple articles, from Articles two, four, seven, eight, 12. And then just so you're aware that there are some other terms where surrounding appears in the UDO, but we, after reviewing them with legal and planning staff, we decided that they did not require any alteration. All right, so first we can see, we'll start here, you're going to see a pattern emerging with a lot of these. As you can see here in Sections 2.3.2, amendments to this text of this ordinance or official zoning district map, rezonings, that we are, again, we're, we're adding all in front of all, surround, all in front of surrounding anytime it appears, or in this case, in the first section, you'll see we have it in front of surrounding, existing and proposed. In Section 2.3.3, conditional zonings under legislative conditions, again, we put in front, all appears in front of surrounding. Again, in Section 4, all appears there. On planned developments, under subsection standards, again, we can see we've incorporated all in front of surrounding here. And then again, in subsection A, development parameters, you can see that we include it all. We did also include some additional language here when, when we're talking about cul-de-sacs. So we have in all the surrounding areas of the proposed cul-de-sac. So that'll reappear a couple of times as we go through these amendments. It's just kind of keeping everything consistent for the different types of developments and approvals that may come to us. Again, so here we have in our planned development subsection, again, we're including the word all, under one of our conditional zoning districts, traditional neighborhood districts here. Again, we've included all in front of the surrounding, and again, we have the wording areas of the proposed cul-de-sac.
Can you tell me about the proposed cul-de-sac?
Yeah, sure. So when considering the areas, any, any of the areas, consider all the areas of the, of the cul-de-sac, so the areas that are completely adjacent to the cul-de-sac, but also how that is going to affect possible transportation issues for nearby areas that, so, because we're not going to have any cross access there, we're going to just have a cul-de-sac that ends, so we're not having the mobility that we're really looking for. So we want to consider all the uses and all the potential things around before we just go ahead and say cul-de-sac is okay, or, you know, that that will be sufficient for what we're looking for as far as the code is required.
Got it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Again, we're adding the word all here to the surrounding, under section, major employment centers, again, we're adding the words all in front of surrounding here, again, all. Again, under public facilities, again, we're including all surrounding land uses. Down in subsection M, minor deviations, we're adding the word all, but removing the word the. And then for specialty use permits, under subsection D standards, again, we're adding the word all in front of surrounding, again, in subsection three, and then in conditions and restrictions of subsection E as well. In 2.3.6 site plans, again, all has been added to subsection A under purpose. And then in 4.4.2 supplemental standards, public and civic uses, again, all has been added to subsection E veterinary clinic or hospital, under subsection B there. Under section 4.4.3, again, all has been added in front of surrounding, under supplemental standards, utilities, chipping and mulching. This, we're going to see kind of a pattern here. Again, these are all, most of, most of these uses are under our supplemental standards for utilities itself, communication towers, same aspect, camouflage and cell towers, again, all has been added. Electrical power facilities, all has been added to that subsection. Recycling plants, all has been added. Utility minor, all has been added there twice. Under subsection H, sanitary landfills, again, we've added all for surrounding, all their land uses there. And again, in subsection I, land clearing and inert grease landfills, all has been added as well. Under wireless support structures, communication facilities, this should comply, subsection two, all has been added as there as well. And then under 4.4.5, commercial uses, supplemental standards for commercial uses, under public accommodation, subsections for bed and breakfast, again, all has been added under subsection G and under subsection H. Also going in the commercial, we have retail services here, and we can see that we've added all under three, subsection C here, and again, for kennel. And then number nine, laundromat, again, we've added all in front of the surrounding land uses. In subsection H, vehicle repair and services, again, under two, 2B here, we've also added all surrounding as well. Under 4.1, accessory uses and structures, this section here, we see we've also added all there. 7.2.1, under design standards, subsection A, one, again, all has been added in front of surrounding, G as well, all has been added there as well. Again, we see surrounding areas of proposed cul-de-sac that's repeated here. 7.5.4, again, we can see this, we're not adding all here. This was, legal provided some, some input here, and they have, we included with in, so we've added the in behind the with. We remove surrounding and we, we use areas adjacent to the subdivision as determined by the planning director. In section 7.5.7, all has been added in front of surrounding, 8.1.2 resource conservation area. Subsection F, 3B, again, we added all of in front of surrounding interior embankments up to the top of the dam elevation. Again, in 8.3.9, subsection E, all has been added in front of surrounding, 8.3.10, parking structures, all has been added in addition to, so areas was added after surrounding. So now it says all surrounding areas. Under 8.6.1, exterior lighting, purpose and intent, again, all has been added in front of surrounding. And finally, in 12.2, terms defined, all has been added in front of the surrounding as well. We feel that this is in line with, with current case law, and we hope that you will see that this is in the best public interest and recommend approval of these proposed zoning amendments.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions?
This doesn't change how you've actually applied the UDO.
No, so most, most districts like Town of Wake Forest as well, you know, we use the word surrounding to kind of mean interpretively all the areas, yeah. But this is just removing any ambiguity, so we can confidently say, nope, this is the requirement, please follow this.
Clarity is kind of.
All of it.
All of it.
All of it.
You know, when you use a word so much, you start to see it as a foreign word.
You're going to get spelled wrong. It sounds funny, yeah.
Well, I thoroughly appreciate that I'm ending a note on UDO amendments.
I will make a motion to approve the amendments to the UDO. Alyssa?
He's the second.
He's second? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and one more motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I won't second just yet. I want to say thank you, Tima, for your time and your service to this board. It's much appreciated, and you'll be very missed.
Thank you.
Concur.
Thank you for wearing your heart on your sleeve tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Can't wait to see you in this year, Tim.
I can.
Did we have a second? I missed that.
I'll second.
Were you second?
I won't second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any adjourn?